So you apologize?
Yeah.
Doc, how are you? I heard they changed the legislation.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
They just took out the appropriation. I think it's... I think the suburbs.
Yeah. How you doing? Not too bad. You gonna be able to get that?
I think we shot right there behind the table.
Cool, so... You are directly... Probably, or maybe, maybe not. But there's just no stopping.
I did? It's up? It was really good.
I mean, I guess it's a calculated... It's not gonna go well. Sorry about that. I think it's gotta be...
Oh, look at you. Playing roles? At least they fixed it.
And you're working your way down to Jolene go ahead and ask the question and we can respond to the question. I know a couple weeks ago you made some comments regarding police officers not being allowed to speak to the Department of Justice. I do retract that statement. And police officers are now going to be allowed to speak with the DOJ, is that correct?
Mr. President, that communication was corrected. It was, and I take full responsibility for it. What we were trying to clarify was this simple message. Is that while we're in the DOJ process, it's important for those people who choose or who are meeting with the Department of Justice to have adequate representation when they met with them. That was the only intent of that communication. That communication was corrected later that evening. And then I met with all the command staff the next day and informed them of the exact same thing. An additional communication went out later that afternoon that said that we will continue to fully cooperate with the Department of Justice.
Okay, when you state that they need representation, would that be a city attorney that would represent them?
It would be... I'm sorry, Mr. President. That would be representation either from the city attorney's office or from our special counsel.
And they would need to go through your office prior to speaking to the Department of Justice? I think I saw that in the article in the Albuquerque Journal.
That is what the article said. It was not for permission. It was for us to enable that communication between the city attorney's office and our special counsel.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Counselor Cardenio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Chief. So what I'm hearing you say is that no one needs permission and they could do it autonomously. They could choose to go and meet with DOJ without going through any kind of command or anyone that's their supervisor?
Mr. President and Counselor Cardenio, that is correct.
So when you say that they could avail themselves of the city attorney or anyone else, that is just something that they would choose, not something that is being required of them to do?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Perry. And this is in reference to, you know, I've heard from a number of sources that you are now present at the scenes of officer-involved shootings. My question is why? And what is the purpose of the CIO being at officer-involved shootings when the APD chain of command investigators are already at the scene?
Thanks for the question, President. There's been a couple of officer-involved shootings that happened out here. I think you probably noticed the level of inquiry on these officer-involved shootings. So the major function is basically to deal with dissemination of information. I think that when you go out to the scene, it gives you personal knowledge as it relates to what some of the more general concepts are about what happened. Information that will be available that you may call about, the media may call about, other folks who'd wanna know. So that's the general purpose. There's some other purposes that are within the realm of reason for that as well. I've been practicing law for 27 years and been involved in a lot of cases such as officer-involved shootings. And so I like to know what's happening out there. As you know from organizational chart, I am the person that's responsible for the administration of the Albuquerque Police Department.
And my concern is, you know, I know you're trying to disseminate information, but shouldn't that job be up to the police chief and investigators that are at that scene? And not the CIO of the city of Albuquerque?
Well, it's done in conjunction with the Albuquerque Police Department and their PIOs and the like. But it's a very dynamic situation as it relates to officer-involved shootings and our ability to release things. We live in a media world now where people want things, you know, as they happen. And many of these cases, quite frankly, Mr. President, we have situations where, you know, folks that are on scene are showing videos of their own cell phones and things like that. I think it's important to be able to provide the media the basics of what occurs out on the scene in order that we don't have a situation where the message about what happened is being portrayed by one side. So I think it's a, you know, fairly objective thing to try to provide the basic information that's out there.
Well, isn't that the job also of the PIO to provide that information? We just hired Janet Blatter as the PIO and she's being paid over $8,000.
I think certainly it's in coordination with the PIO from the Department, the communications director, as well as the PIOs themselves, some of the folks that are involved in investigative process and the like. But there's a lot of nuances that go into that as far as legal decisions, as far as releasing information and things like that. So I think based on my legal background, my administrative background as the city manager, my involvement with the media typically, when they don't get it from the department, the media routinely calls our office. And so I think it's critical for that.
And I have one more question, and that is in reference to the disturbance that took place in the mayor's office a couple of weeks ago. You as a CIO were videotaping the disturbance?
That's correct.
And not trying to de-escalate the situation?
Uh, no, that's not correct at all. There was multiple times when I told the folks that had invaded the mayor's office through the use of force, pushing a police officer aside, that they were in a controlled, secure area. It was not open to the public and that they were being disruptive and that they were trespassing. And I imagine that will be the testimony that I'll provide in the court. I don't intend to provide you any additional details of that because it is pending on the litigation right now.
But do we not have cameras in the mayor's office that could have videotaped and filmed this incident?
There is video surveillance of certain aspects of it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Cardenio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Perry, I don't know whether you explained it or not. And I don't know if you wanna continue lively discussion. You probably won't. But I do find it interesting that you would don't think that by threatening people and then now even making statements that I don't think are true based on the information that I've seen, that you continue to still essentially dehumanize the folks that were there as if they were invading. You know, words have consequences.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think they invaded. So I would suggest that we be careful how we use the words we use. I don't think they invaded and I don't think they pushed officers aside. All of those things. And that have come out in court and data goes there. But I don't think that using that kind of terminology in a civil gathering that that's beneficial to anyone. And to continue that kind of discussion, I don't want to. But they will if people want to.
Sure. Mr. President and Counselor Cardenio, I appreciate your semantical precision.
Thank you.
I think that I generically referred to folks forcing their way in. And that's exactly what happened. I was there. I don't think anyone downstairs was. So I'll stand by those words. I'm not gonna be wildly fantastical about what occurred. I think they're fairly accurate general descriptions. Thank you.
Well, Mr. President.
Counselor Winter.
I wanna correct one thing. I just heard, and if we had a court report, we could have them read back. But you did use the term invaded and I take exception to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, the police chief reports to you that's correct as far as the chain of investigation?
Uh, Mr. President, Counselor Winter, that's correct.
So you have oversight on the police department?
Yes, sir.
And I think it is very appropriate for you to be at some of those issues that we've had regarding the shooting because it's more oversight. And I think that's something that we have been lacking in the past. So I appreciate you being there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. We are now under the New Journal. I move a call of the United Journal. Have a motion any second and questions. Seeing all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, that's yours, Anderson. We are now under communication and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that the rules be systematic for the purposes of placing R-66 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-66 is amending the adopted capital implementation program of the city of Albuquerque by reappropriating funding from the Boski Restoration Project to a 50-mile activity project.
We have a motion any second to suspend the word R-66. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, that's yours, Anderson. We are now...
...of its new trees. Cook a seed, then plant it. That seed will never grow. Cooking kills the seed. Cooked food is dead.
Mary Jo. Could you give your plug? So just a little...
Hi, my name's Michael Jensen. I moved here in 1990 from Washington DC, which at the time was known as the murder capital of the world. House I was living in had a bullet put through in an upstairs window one evening. Somebody was killed across the street one afternoon. And yet, when I moved here in the early 1990s, I was shocked by the number of people killed by the Albuquerque Police Department who are obviously mentally ill. And I thought that we had gotten past those days until this past year or two. And I'm shocked again. We are way beyond in many ways having public awareness and public outreach. I think the public is aware of what's going on. I applaud that effort. I think it's important. But something really, really serious needs to be done with the Albuquerque Police Department and the city that administers it. We cannot... I expect, I hope, to live here for another couple of decades. And I don't want to ever see this happen again in this city. So thank you very much. I wish you luck. We're gonna need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo, David Correa, Paul Haye, and Frank Portega. Welcome. Move it up, Harris. Move it up.
Good evening, Council. Obviously, you all know me. My name's Mary Jo. My husband, father of my three children, was murdered by APD March of 2012. Yes, his name is listed in the DOJ report over nine times. Since then, though the DOJ report has come out, nothing has changed. So because of this, I'm asking permission from you guys if we can have a moment of silence for my husband and those other victims of APD brutality?
Do you make a push?
That's all. I was just asking if we can... Thank you.
Thank you. David Correa, Paul Haye, Frank Portega, Simon Polakowski, and Jessica Martinez. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselors. In April 2001, a Cincinnati police officer shot and killed an unarmed 19-year-old black man named Timothy Thomas. Then Cincinnati Police Chief Tom Stryker refused to release any information about that shooting. Thomas was the 15th young black man killed by police in five years. And rioting broke out in African-American neighborhoods terrorized by decades of...
Jennifer, would you please keep that picture down? Does it... I'm threatening the audience.
Sure, I'll keep the picture of the dead 30 hours or...
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. President.
Police Chief Tom Stryker refused to release any information about the shooting. Thomas was the 15th young black man killed by police in five years. Rioting broke out in African-American neighborhoods terrorized by decades of police violence. The mayor of Cincinnati called in the DOJ. The investigation produced an April 2002 agreement that Stryker spent years ignoring. He routinely blocked monitors at every step. He lived up to the agreement only because the courts made him. The man most responsible for decades of violent racialized policing in Cincinnati and an expert at evading DOJ-imposed remedies to unconstitutional policing is the man Mayor Berry now wants to represent Albuquerque in negotiations with the DOJ. This is who you're being asked to approve a quarter million dollar contract. Mayor Berry did not want the DOJ investigation in the first place and his selection, Stryker, now demonstrates that he has no intention to live up to any future agreement. I call on you to reject this contract extension. I suspect you would have heard many more comments this evening calling on you to reject this contract extension, but this body voted to restrict public comment. Last week was a bad day for the First Amendment in Albuquerque. First, Gordon Eaton's gag order, which he's now backed off of. Then later that day, this council passed more restrictions on public comment. Do not allow this to be the legacy of the city council. It has been the legacy of every other city council. Victims and family members of police violence and those of us who stand in solidarity with them challenge you to finally and courageously confront a long history of inaction on the part of the city and an even longer history of police violence against poor, against people of color, and people suffering from mental illness. Thank you. Counselor Cardenio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Correa, welcome back.
Thank you.
I heard you say that in Cincinnati, the mayor had called for the DOJ to do the investigation.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Was there a reason for that other than have it go... I'm choosing my words. We could have had that here and for some reason we didn't. Do you think that there's any reason that this administration would refrain from questioning? Or did they think it would just go away, the problem we had?
I was hoping to ask Mayor Berry that question on June 2nd, but he wasn't in his office. I can't guess why Mayor Berry didn't ask like the Cincinnati mayor, the DOJ had come in to investigate. But I suspect as someone who's studied the history of police violence in New Mexico and Albuquerque, that he didn't really see it as a problem. Certainly, there have been comments from some counselors on this board that have indicated that there are plenty of people that don't see it as a problem. But 31 people were killed by APD between 87 and 97 and the city council took that very seriously. And the Walker Luna report took that problem very seriously. And important reforms were implemented and they were very important reforms. And then 23 people died the next six years with APD. So I think that reforms are no longer the answer. At yesterday's memorial, Father Rusty from St. Martin's challenged all of us to end homelessness and support people with mental illness in our city. And I think that those are the kinds of solutions that unfortunately are never a part of the reform measures that come from the mayor's office.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Correa. That's one of the things I think that this council's been talking about in hopes to answer, not only because of the reforms of the POA or POC, but also because of some of the legislation that's being introduced by both Counselor Winter and others. And we wanna see if that's what is needed, not unlike what you just mentioned. And that is to include the societal change that is needed. Because to take care of these things peacefully or in certain areas but not collectively, we'll never get there. And I wanna offer you my commitment that I will support anything that will support true change, not just reform.
Thank you, Counselor Cardenio.
Thank you. Next speaker, Paul Haye, followed by Frank Portega, followed by Simon Polakowski, followed by Jessica Martinez. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Council President Sanchez, my name is Paul Haye. I'm a retired Albuquerque police officer. I'll be an Albuquerque police officer the day I die. Everybody wants Albuquerque police officers to be held accountable. That's all we're hearing. I couldn't agree more and I'm sure they can't agree more. However, the city leadership should be held accountable too. There's been a rumor going around, and it's been getting stronger and stronger. And to President Sanchez's credit, he has investigated, it seems, that Mr. Perry was at the scene of the last police shooting. He has admitted that. We all know he has a habit of showing up at scenes where he has no business except at the Mary Han death scene. However, what Mr. Sanchez didn't address, and maybe he doesn't know, that the rumor, and I will say it as rumor, but at least part of it been verified tonight, is that he had a driver drive him to that crime scene. That he was intoxicated at the crime scene and tried to interfere with the crime scene. I wish Mr. Perry was here because I intended to ask him that to his face. So seeing that I can't because he's not here, I will ask Mr. Sanchez, President Sanchez, and the council to please investigate this further to find out if it is true or if it's false. And if it is true, to hold him accountable, just as everyone's asking the police officers to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank Portega. Simon Polakowski. Welcome, Mr. Portega.
Mr. President, Counselors. I'm here because I was reading the paper and how they've asked to give those people that came from Cincinnati a raise. You know, they started at 70,000, went to 200-some thousand now. When we don't even... We give our city employees a 3% raise when anything went up. They're 2% behind types now. The thing is that we have to be proud. We're in the last of the list in New Mexico for jobs. We're last here in the city of Albuquerque. And the chamber is happy in telling you everything's great. Is this the way we want Albuquerque? Because we've achieved something great. We're last in everything. Except we are number one for population unkillings by the Albuquerque Police Department. I hope everybody up there and everybody up in this administration are very happy what happened to Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon Polakowski, followed by Jessica Martinez, followed by Ted Naminski.
Council President, Council, I'm here representing all of us all. I came during the last council meeting, which had been canceled. As I was entering City County Building, the president, the vice president, the vice president of the Albuquerque Police Officers Association resident officers Willoughby and Lopez, and they were told that City... They said council had been canceled because of the crazies. I've been coming here for two years almost now. And I've watched, I was amazed when I saw the people who had come down in group and massed here at the podium demonstrating, most civilly. And they were basically begging council for action. They begged and begged and begged, "Please do something. Please make our police department accountable for its actions. Treat our police officers like our citizens on the same equal basis." I didn't believe them to be crazies. I have never known any of these people that chase down a human being, shoot them in the back, and kill them. They have done everything on camera, in fact purposely on camera. They have never hit anything behind anybody's back. And as for the mayor, you know, the mayor, people go, "Well, where's the mayor?" I watched you publicly testify in front of, I believe, the Finance Committee. And they talked about a prop house. I believe the mayor is just a prop. That's why he's not here and we're not allowed props any bigger than this. You will see one of these before you ever see the mayor here at City Council. I guarantee. So please, but these people have been very, very simple. They begged many times, "The DOJ wouldn't have to come here. We could have done this on our own." If council, well, then that council had acted. So I'm hoping that this council will act. Thank you.
And Mr. Polakowski, the reason the meeting was canceled is the city was in lockdown and we would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. That was the only reason that meeting was canceled. That was the only reason that meeting was canceled.
Okay, well, like I said, I just, those are the words I heard, and I wanted...
That's the reason the meeting was canceled. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Jessica Martinez, followed by Ted Naminski, followed by Annette K. Moore, followed by Diana Vargas. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jessica Martinez. I would like to invite you all to the march on June 24th at eleven a.m. We're meeting at Roosevelt Park. This is a family-friendly event. I will be there. I hope you join me and bring your friends, grandkids, I mean, kids, grandkids or friends. Thank you. I hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Jessica. Ted Naminski, followed by Annette K. Moore, followed by Diana Vargas, followed by Steve Kramer. Come, proceed.
Hello, my name is Ted Naminski. Yes, I don't have to introduce anyone. Anyway, yes. Council, we need, all council has a lot to do, I'm sure. Now, let's go move it on. Well, doesn't look too good. I also noticed flag, swimming trunks are made of flag to bros, women's bros of well caps. That's what I'm talking about, our flag, United States flag. Well, it does look bad. Let's take a look. Our picture. In the park, it is net gun. Yesterday, during the meeting, I received. How you like that? Now, how can you say a council, mayor, council and administration pretty much like this net gun? That's the way business is being done. That's all I want to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette K. Moore, followed by Diana Vargas, followed by Steve Kramer, and the last speaker under general public comments will be James Wirtha. Welcome in.
Hello, councilors. Thank you, Mr. Perea.
Welcome back.
Okay, I've sent some letters to every councillor. I got one response back from Diane Gibson. Thank you very much for your response. Your response was, thank you for your emails and your perspective about the public comment role. City council has provided the opportunity for people to express themselves on any topic at regular meeting before legislation and other city business discussed. One recent occasion, not only were we unable to do the work that is critical to the city, and people living here, about dozens of people, were denied their time for comment. The new rules council adopted will ensure the public will be able to speak and respect peaceful forum and the work of the city can be done. I have discussed this with the council legal staff. I am told that the changes as well as our process implementing them are within the law. Thank you again for getting in touch. I appreciate your email. Appreciate you responding, Ms. Gibson. I appreciate that. But I did not get any responses from any of the other councillors. I am interested in the winter Benton Amendment being ratified, changed. I think every individual has a right to be heard at every council meeting, and that it shouldn't be turned over to the next meeting for them to be able to step up then, because they were denied. I believe that there is control, but there's a lot of pain. My peace has been dismantled. My peace has been interrupted. When one individual is killed, you interrupt my peace. You hurt my life. I have been lost homelessness, then my son lives in Oklahoma, and there's an APD cop block in Oklahoma. Handcuffed, tased, over and over and over, permanent damage to his left hand.
Thank you. Diana Vargas? Welcome.
Hi. How does this, those, you can see it all? Yeah. So I made extra copies of these. If anybody would like them, please want to take them if you actually want them, because copies aren't cheap. Apparently, people don't care about how many people have died, and perhaps maybe that's not the route we need to go. Maybe we should talk about money. Perhaps maybe that would be good. So we say that it's something along the lines of like twenty-eight, thirty thousand dollars. It's not including court costs, that's not including Chief Eaton's four-man team to include a PR person, because he does not have the ability to speak in front of cameras, or every time he talks, like some explosive thing happens. And by explosive, I only mean like people talking about it. So it looks to me like he can't do his job either. Maybe we just send him home too. And the ex-Chief Cincinnati, Tom Stryker, he needs to go. His whole book is about him. I asked everybody to Google him. He needs to go. He's an outsider. He represents Mayor Berry, and all of his appointees are white men. This government does not represent the true demographics of New Mexico. So he held up negotiations in his own city. He destroyed his own city. So let him go back to his city and deal with that. And yeah, I said that. Don't like look like you're trying to intimidate somebody either, because I can't do it anymore, because I actually like you. I think you're funny, you know? I'm a good dressing sometimes, you know? And so these are all the headlines, right? Taser International, right? Talking about money. So how can we effectively have somebody to reform if their paycheck is dependent on the other place that they actually represent? So a million dollars was one of the highest orders that was distributed out from Taser International, sold to Cincinnati courtesy of Tom Stryker. Send him to Cincinnati along with mayor and Eaton.
Thank you. Steve Kramer? And the last speaker under general public comment will be James Wirtha. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I just want to... Council, I'm here this evening to ask you to strongly consider with great care the contract with Stryker and Greenwood. We are already on the hook for seventy thousand. About an additional forty million dollars is being requested now. And for what? And so it seems like for what can be answered quite clearly. This is a quote from Mr. Greenwood himself in a recent interview on PBS. And the people are not entitled to know who our clients are, period. And this is a response he gave when being asked about Taser. And I don't really know what kind of image this sets for this company, but I don't think it's a good one. And then furthermore, Mr. Stryker added that he called the DOJ's letter, DOJ's report a letter. It says the DOJ's letter is an opinion that is certainly arguable. And then when speaking specifically to the council, he says, and I quote, "Council has a really important role to play, but we want it to be consistent with what we end up agreeing to DOJ." And I'm here to tell you, and I'm not a native, but I've been here a long time, and I'm assuming some of you guys are, and it's obvious that this is a very local city, and to allow these kind of statements out with these people from out of town, I just don't understand. And furthermore, I don't understand if we're lacking the talent locally, or if this is just the way it goes. And in addition to the additional quarter million dollars being asked for now, when does it end? And how much will it actually end up costing at the end of the day? Because we have no idea how long this process will go on. And I would encourage you guys to not have an open-ended contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker under general public comment is going to be James Wirtha.
Welcome.
President, councilors, my name is James Wirtha. I'm here to reiterate on a few points that I made last city council meeting about the recent change of city council's procedures, the banning of media signs, flags, et cetera, personal items. I just believe that prohibition on signs and other personal media are out of line and violation of First Amendment right. Showing non-threatening media doesn't guarantee a storming of city council, as I said before. Non-threatening items shouldn't be banned, exceptions included, nudity, thought language, threats, et cetera. City council is a public body, therefore the public's rights should not be infringed in any way regarding general public comment. Let me say that one more time. City council, the city council is a public body. So I just want to throw that out there, because this has to do directly with the public neighborhood speaking. Personal media shown in a civil manner, an orderly manner, will not disrupt the business of city council, because that was one of the points I was making last meeting, that it will be disruptive and will cause a big hole in things with everybody. So if it's done in a civil and orderly manner, I don't think it will. And let's see. And that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the general public comment. We are now moving to announcements. Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, there will be a guidelines negotiations committee meeting tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. in the council committee room.
Counsel Kramer.
There'll be an Albuquerque Burnley County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday through the 18th at 5:00 p.m. in the Mink and Ewing.
The mayor's recommendation to city council, the county council may choose to accept that recommendation, whether without the findings, the city council may also adopt its own findings, or the city council may reject the recommendation, or may turn off the case, in which case this matter will be scheduled for a full hearing before the council of its next meeting. Council will not hear from the parties tonight. I'll maybe making a short presentation that goes into a little bit more detail. Council's consideration tonight should be limited to the facts that are already in the record. If you have questions about those, definitely my best to help guide you to some of those facts. If there's stuff that the city council would like to consider or hear more about, if you do not feel satisfied with the latest turn out to the recommendation, they should reject. The council should reject this request beforehand. The facts of the case are as follows. The property owner, the applicant in this case, owned a property zone, SU2 for C3 uses, located on the Martinez, Santa Barbara, Martinez Town, Santa Barbara Sector Development Plan. Pursued with that section of the development plan, treating of food products, so permitted by conditional use permit. In this particular case, the applicant is requested to be able to treat coffee beans, specifically to roast coffee beans in a small outdoor area in the back of the property, which he would install a five-pound coffee roaster. The applicant came in for a conditional use permit and was heard by the zoning hearing examiner, which pointed the Martinez Town Ward Group also gave testimony and raised questions about whether or not this particular use would pollute the environment, whether or not it would create traffic problems, whether or not there'd be noise and other issues associated with the use. And the applicant brought in and put on testimony, hired an expert environmental agency to provide testimony. It testified effectively that the addition of this coffee roaster to the site would not be any more polluting than effectively the addition of another single-family residential use, a coffee roaster.
Move approval? We have a motion, a second by Council Vice President Jones and the administration. Did you want to speak on this?
Mr. President, Counselor, stand up. Counselor President, I believe David Church will start the discussion, and then we have Scott Greenwood available with questions and discussion.
Mr. Fuhr, let me listen.
Mr. President, councilors, the contract that currently exists in a... I do have to correct one thing. When I was talking to a reporter for the Journal, he got it right. This contract is a supplement, or the supplement that's before you, is through June of 2015. I had looked at the write-up, which you have. It's a cover analysis, and that added only for FY14. This does go through until it's extended, until we have to come before council again. But it is an increase from the seventy thousand dollar contract that I have been to, with Mr. Greenwood, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar supplement that would increase it to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Mr. President, Mr. Fuhr, do you expect that he would come back to the council between now and the end of, the end of this, with this term of this amount and asking for more?
Of the fiscal year?
No. Not fiscal year of what? You said this is through 2015, right?
Correct.
Do you expect that between now and June 2015 that you'd be adding to this contract?
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, yes.
And do you know about how much?
I would have to speak with Mr. President, Counselor Lewis. I would have to talk with Mr. Greenwood. It would be more, yes.
So technically, this would be an open-ended, it's open-ended really when it comes to Mr. Greenwood's services, that you're really asking for an open-ended contract and be able to come back to this council and ask for just about, I guess, anything within reason or not?
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, it would come back before you, just as any supplement that would be, I would be required to do with any attorney on a contract with the city.
Was there a reason that you didn't, if you all had an idea, that it would possibly be more than the seventy thousand dollars? Is there a reason why you didn't come to us when it was, from the beginning, you had about a two hundred thousand dollar contract?
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, at the time, we were determining who was going to represent the city in this. I was concerned more with having appropriate representation instead of what we do right now. For example, those attorneys that have represented the city for the last twenty years or so, I know what their caseload is and what they will be reasonably. They give us a case management plan, which is what Mr. Greenwood does. Each attorney gives a case management plan based on the number of cases that, for example, the roadless firm, I can anticipate what they would be asking for. Similarly, we have asked for, with those regular contractor attorneys, three hundred thousand dollars. And then we would come back for a supplement if it's over that long.
I see more. Mr. President, if you have more questions later, I'll let you go.
Okay, Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, do we have folks that are signed up?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, I'll just, you know, ask a couple of questions down, but reserve the right to ask questions later. Just very quickly, along the lines of what Counselor Lewis was asking, if we knew some of these things, would we have come to the council and said, we are engaging someone to represent us as a city, and we'd like to have a contract for two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, whatever the amount would have been, but it would have been an open contract to the council, and hopefully it would have been an RFP that would have been out to the public, and we would have been able to find out if there were different folks who could have been on this RFP.
Mr. President, Counselor, there is no RFP associated with the attorneys that represent the city.
Okay, well, then let me put it another way. If we would have been able to go out to other folks and solicit the services of other folks, we would have been able to find out who else was able to do this kind of work. I know that traditionally or in other cases, you've said that sometimes those expertise do not reside in the city attorney's office, and so you are essentially forced to go outside. In this case, is that true?
Mr. President, Counselor Gardner, we do have attorneys in-house at the city attorney's office that are going to be associating with Mr. Greenwood. But as to this expertise in this area of what we're dealing with right now, no, we do not have anyone in-house that has ever dealt with this type of situation. And the analogy you were bringing up as to when we have an expertise, when we hire somebody, for example, Fair Labor Standards cases, we have a firm out of Chicago that represents the city, but that wasn't just initial. for example, Fair Labor Standards cases, we have a firm out of Chicago that represents the city, but that wasn't just initially with a contract. We had engaged a while back, and that would have been, when we didn't expect a Fair Labor Standards case, that doesn't come along every day. We would hire somebody at $70,000.
Right. And staying with the idea of certain expertise, there were other folks that you talked to, either you or whoever did the hiring?
Mr. President, Counsel Gardena, in terms of regarding Mr. Greenwood?
Right, with the contract.
I did, Mr. President, Counsel Gardena, I did talk to people that Mr. Greenwood has appeared in front of, has represented, and educators that know his work and had endorsed him.
Right. Can you pull that up, go on, on the other side? Are there no one else in the country that has the same expertise, or anyone else that we talked to?
Mr. President, Counsel Gardena, I'm sure there are some, I did not talk to them. My concern was making sure we had the immediate attorney on retainer to deal with this issue.
And how did that become so evident, that was the person at the moment at such urgency?
Mr. President, Counsel Gardena, I heard of Mr. Greenwood, he was referred to me, I believe he's already represented, that the mayor had contacted him. I wanted to check him out, and I made sure and checked him out, and to check his product, his clients that he has represented, and the one big thing for me that persuaded me to retain Mr. Greenwood was Judge Delot of Cincinnati. She was someone who had, it's the Article 3 judge of Cincinnati, she's the United States District Court Chief Judge, and she is the one that presided over this issue in Cincinnati.
And granted that that was certainly a situation with a known outcome, but there must have been other known outcomes throughout the country, where other folks, we would have been able to just get on the phone or find out from other folks that would have vetted the people that have done that kind of work, and we would at least have had an idea of the competitiveness of that area, and you could have been able to choose any one person besides Mr. Greenwood, or aside from Mr. Greenwood. And it worries me that we went to that because of the urgency, it sounds like, that it was an urgency that was under a cap for a contract that would otherwise would have come to the council, had it been over 75,000, and why it was capped at 70,000. And I was under the impression that 70,000 would take care of most of the things you needed from that person or that hire, and it turns out, obviously, it wasn't, because here we are with a supplemental of 150,000, so I'm wondering what the thinking was.
Mr. President, Counselor Gardena, I have, and I've only done it maybe a handful of times that I can think of, retaining an attorney for a certain expertise without it being a contract attorney. I could say 99% of the time, we usually have the contract attorneys that come before you on a regular basis, or it's handled in-house. Generally, it's handled in-house, otherwise I have to send it out, and it's usually a conflict. Most of the time, it's a conflict basis. But after that, if there's, for example, a, we had one recently where we brought in a appellate specialist, this case is still going on, so I don't want to go that far into it, but an appellate specialist to help us out on a judgment, and she did real well for us, and that contract was for 70,000 or 50,000, I think, but I used it very sparingly. In this case, if it was $70,000, the final approval, and it does come before you, to make sure that if this is approved or it's not approved, council has that ability to check the city attorney.
And, Mr. President, just a very short answer to your short question. Because we didn't know that, and we're assuming that 70,000 would be a number to hang our head on, but then it turned out to be 150,000 or more, wouldn't it have been prudent to allow then other folks to participate, to bid, to whatever, to vet it, once you knew that it was going to be more than this, this $70,000?
Mr. President, Counsel Gardena, I think we have the right personnel.
Okay, well, we'll see. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, Mr. President, Mr. Turk, did Mr. Greenwood indicate to you or give you an estimate on the total contract, what the total contract would cost?
He has submitted, Mr. President, Counsel Lewis, he has submitted a case management plan.
With the amount, the total amount of the entire contract in 2015?
Yes.
A million dollars?
No. Mr. President, Counsel Lewis, no.
About how much is the?
Mr. President, Counsel Lewis, it's up to, but he submitted what's up to a half million.
Oh, my God.
Counsel Krimmer, then we will go to public comment.
Mr. Turk, I just want to ask, you know, knowing the severity of this and how we need to respond as a council, and I'm sure as the administration needs to respond, I understand that you guys have the authority to hire someone and not go through the RFP process for 75,000, I think it is, or under, or is it 70,000?
Mr. President, Counselor, Pena, it's 75, but with gross receipts, we keep it at 70.
Okay. Well, I just think it's kind of unfortunate that, you know, doing this, you probably knew ahead of time that it was going to be, the contract would be higher at the time when you secured him, and I feel bad because I feel like it's tied to council's hands, and it's kind of, this is who we get, and this is all we get, so I wish we would have the opportunity to really be able to look for someone, whether it's locally, nationwide, so I just wanted to add that thing.
And I'd like to make one comment regarding one of the comments that Mr. Greenwood made when he was speaking to the council for the first time. He did stipulate and say that there was going to be an extension of his contract. That was the first of the contract, 70,000 was not going to be adequate to basically represent the city in this particular case.
Mr. President, that's correct.
Okay, let's go to general public comment on this agenda, item EC14-106. Jennifer Oat, Larry Cronin, David Correa, Steve Kramer, and once your name has been called, you please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Followed by David Correa.
Thank you, counsel. I've gone back and forth in my mind about what I feel about this supplemental contract, and where I've come down right now is I feel we have a legal department, and we trust that legal department to negotiate many contracts, to negotiate many lawsuits, to defend the city. We have Mr. Wheeler, we have Mr. Torek, and we pay them to take care of those issues for the city. And if they don't have the expertise, I'm not sure why they're in that position, if they can't do that work for the city. I personally feel that the people who negotiate with the DOJ should be the people who are also going to be part of the implementation of it, and be part of the community, and be answerable to the community. I understand that the local firms that they normally contract with, I think would be conflicted out because they're defending those incidents that the DOJ is saying is in violation of our constitution, and therefore, they have vested interests to push that way. I'm surprised in manner, as the council pointed out, that you weren't informed that this extra money was going to be being asked for. So at this point in time, I urge you not to approve this supplemental contract.
Thank you. David Correa, followed by Steve Kramer, followed by Ravi Ladwani. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, counsel. I was at a DOJ meeting last Monday, talking with the U.S. Attorney and the team that will be negotiating this contract with DOJ. It was 40 people in that room, a remarkably diverse group of people, Lulak, the Hispanic Roundtable, people from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, various decent justice activists in the community, those from non-governmental organizations. There was a lot of disagreement in the room, and there was one thing that everyone agreed on, which was that having Scott Greenwood and Tom Stryker represent the city in negotiations would give this negotiation no credibility. It was why, we spent three and a half hours with the DOJ, asking that there be in some manner, community participation in the negotiation, for obvious reasons, that would be anticipated. The DOJ declined that request and decided that it was not possible to have community participation in that meeting, and said, of course, it was not up to them to dictate who would represent the city, but we walked away from that meeting, making it very clear. Really, honestly, the only thing that everyone agreed about in a three and a half hour meeting was that this is not a negotiation team that provides any credibility for negotiation that comes out. I encourage you not to approve this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Kramer? Ravi Ladwani?
I'd like to start by pointing out that I don't know very much about this issue, but I have read up on both sides of it, and one thing that strikes me is, so far, as far as city council is concerned, there is no involvement with the controversy regarding TASER, and I would like to just point that out to you so that you can keep yourself out of that. In the future, there is probably going to be some very embarrassing developments in that area, so that's one reason why I think you should not, as a city council, approve Another reason why I think it's not a good idea is because of the nefarious record in Cincinnati and other places, not in terms of the government, but in terms of the citizens, in terms of the people. And I think that you, as part of the government of Albuquerque, are going to be spending a lot more money with lawsuits and through the back door, if you do not listen to what's good for the people. I think proving this, of these monies, is like throwing money down the hole. It's just not going to get any good. I think we do have a very capable and competent council here in the city, and they are very able to take care of this by themselves. If you look at the Department of Justice as an enemy, of course, you would need help to go against them and to negotiate with them. I don't think that's necessary. I think DOJ does not come to cities lightly. It's very important they're here, they're here to help us, and so we do not need to negotiate with them and fight with them. We need to take their help and accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Polakowski?
Mr. President.
Counselors.
Excuse me, sir, can you come back?
Ravi, Counselor has a question for you?
What are you talking about with TASER and embarrassing? What exactly are you saying? That there could be something embarrassing that would come out?
Okay, in my research, I read a lot of the information about the past police chief of Albuquerque, and monies that were taken from TASER.
Okay, talk about the past police chief?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Simon Polakowski? Followed by Sarah Maske.
Counsel, President, counsel. I was here when Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Stryker presented, made their presentation in front of council. I believe after their presentation, a concerned citizen came up and spoke about their involvement with TASER. I also was watching New Mexico Focus a few weeks ago, where this was also discussed, and in fact, I think the host of that program, Mr. Grant, did good work on exposing this connection, so I think there are a lot of questions to be asked about Mr. Stryker, Mr. Greenwood, and their association with a company that provides police equipment. Also, Mr. Stryker's former position as Chief of Police in Cincinnati, and his relationship with DOJ at that time. I also, you know, this has been mentioned many times at council, also that they came and asked for more money. I watched the operators of Public Channel come up and ask for more money in front of the financial committee. Every time I come down to the city council meeting, people who sign contracts come up, and they say, we need more money. Is this the beginning, or is this, you know, the end? You don't know. They're always asking for more money, that they can't do their job unless they're given more money, and things go begging to be done in our city, begging to be done. People ask me, go, oh, if you go in front of the city council, did you ask them about, you know, our meeting, here, how come they're not doing over it? This money, I believe, should be better spent on something else. I would ask council to investigate these people, think about it, maybe ours will be more local. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Sarah Maske. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the questions that Counsel Lewis, Counsel Gardena, and Counsel Pena raised about this contract. I am opposed to it. I lived in Cincinnati, Ohio in 2001, when the Department of Justice came to the city. I can tell you that Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Stryker had bad reputations there. At one point, it's interesting that Mr. Turk mentioned Judge Susan Delot, because she described Mr. Stryker as persistently rude and uncooperative. At one point, she locked Mr. Greenwood in her chambers and ordered pizza, and said, you will negotiate with DOJ. That's a true story, you can look that up. These are not people who have a good reputation for the work that happened in Cincinnati. They have a very negative reputation. In fact, she had to intervene finally in order, Mr. Stryker, to negotiate, to work, and to cooperate, because he would not for years. He refused to give information for monitoring and for data to see how the DOJ was implemented. And I know that this is about Mr. Greenwood's contract, and he is partnering with Mr. Stryker. And again, this is a chief of police who was chief during a time when there was a racist and violent police force. There's a union in Cincinnati of the African-American police officers who spoke out against this chief of police. I think this is one of the worst picks for our city. We should not be working with people who couldn't work with the DOJ previously. I'm also concerned that this is a sole-source, no-bid contract, and those are the questions that you have been raising as well, how did it happen this way? And there are also Greenwood and Stryker have worked for TASER, so there's a connection there. How was it that the mayor chose to refer this? And Mr. Turk said he got the recognition, I believe, from Mayor Berry, and there's this connection with TASER. So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. These people do not have a good reputation in Cincinnati over the DOJ.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. I welcome the opportunity to address you tonight, because you have a couple items on your agenda that I think are very important to the future of policing in Albuquerque. I want to get one thing out there right now at the beginning of my remarks. I have never represented and do not represent TASER International, never have, absolutely do not. I do not, I am not employed by TASER, and I do not do work for TASER. I have never received a personal nickel from TASER. Now, let me address a few of the concerns and comments that I heard before I take some questions, nor does Chief Stryker. He hasn't helped with that, or never has. I want to answer a couple of the questions that I heard from council members, as well as from members of the public. This issue in Albuquerque did not just sneak up on us. It's the result of a long period in which police-community relations broke down, and officers, and the relationship between the police and the community soured, and a pattern that occurred of use of force in the city. That's why the DOJ comes to town in these cases. I know, because I helped write the blueprint for the very type of enforcement that they're doing right now in 2009. I was part of the working group of the civil rights lawyers, the police countabilities in this country, that put together a blueprint for the incoming administration on how to do this work. I am passionately committed to it. The process in Cincinnati a dozen years ago was successful because we sensed that fierce urgency, the need to do it quickly, but the need to do it right. So sure, when we had negotiations, we were actually trying to reach a written agreement, what we called the collaborative agreement, to parallel the DOJ agreement, and our target date was the anniversary of the officer-involved shooting of Timothy Thomas. That was my case, that was my client, so there was a fierce urgency, and yes, we had a federal judge lock us in chambers and tell us, you're doing 20-hour days until you're done. Absolutely. And I'm the lawyer that brought that lawsuit, that put that process into place in Cincinnati. And today, in Cincinnati, for the people who actually reside there, people don't talk about what fixed the department being the Department of Justice, they talk about this open, inclusive, amazing process that we called the collaborative. They talk about this open, inclusive, amazing process that we called the collaborative. And it's a sign of true leadership for this council, and it's two leaders that you are embracing this process as well. And you have the opportunity to do this bigger and better than we ever did. I've heard members of the public here ask repeatedly, every time I've been here, watched the news clip, watched Public Access, I've heard members of the public ask to be included in the process. The legislation you have later in the evening is designed to do exactly that. It's designed to let the citizens, the people, the residents of Albuquerque, address the issues of policing in Albuquerque. These investigations and negotiations are a fairly long process. Albuquerque is a little unique in that you had total cooperation by the police department and the city while the DOJ investigated the department without any parallel negotiation. In other cities, like in Cincinnati, those things happen on parallel tracks. So by the time they had their findings letter out, negotiations were reasonably far along. My team actually vetted and interviewed and turned over the stories of over 700 people in Cincinnati to the Department of Justice to assist them in their work. It's worked differently in different places. I don't want to see you end up in a situation like Seattle is in, where you have an agreement that's negotiated by top-level negotiators on both sides, only to be immediately disavowed by a mayor or a police union or by the members of the public. To answer Counselor Gargano's earlier questions about expertise, I'm going to try to be humble, Sarah. I'm the only plaintiff's attorney in the country who's ever negotiated my way through one of these processes and implemented it successfully from start to finish. There is no other lawyer in the country who has ever done that. And so when the mayor asked me if I would help, I said, "If I can help, if I can help you, I will. And I will do it at a significantly reduced rate, and I will do it in order to help the people of this community." Some of you may remember, I came here directly for my hospital vet. That's how important reform is in this city. I don't know how open-ended this will be. Typically, the negotiations of putting together an agreement, they start with the department submitting a proposal, a proposed agreement, and they end somewhere between six to 12 months later. And then the really hard work begins, that's implementing the agreement that you just signed. But part of my role, I think, I hope you'll agree, because I have pushed to and I have been open to and accessible to all of you, I want Council to be intimately involved in this process, fully briefed, because you are a big part of the solution. And the community, the people behind you, the people who are watching on television, they all have a stake in the success or failure of policing in Albuquerque. Those are the people, through you, they're elected representatives, they're the people on whose behalf I'm really working.
Counselor Gargano and Counselor Lewis?
Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, thank you. I think that you felt that you...
Excuse me, Counselor Lewis. There is a sign that's being put in the back. Would you please keep your sign down? Mr. Maskey?
Yeah.
Please keep that sign down. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go proceed.
Mr. President, Mr. Greenwood, you felt the need, I think naturally, to defend yourself tonight. But I think, I hope you also know that I think one of the reasons why you, I think you're in a position of feeling like you had to defend yourself tonight, because there is a natural distrust, I think, in this body, there's a natural distrust in this council and administration. You talked about your role. I think one of the reasons, one role that you have, and I hope you understand this, I think you do, by representing us, I would want someone who's representing me to understand that the role is to help us build some trust, help us build trust back with the city, the very people who are asking some of the questions about whether it be conflict of interest or asking about some of your background, are asking that with the hopes that, you know, there's, that we're, there is no doubt that we can trust the city, we can trust this person that's representing us. So I'm glad that you made that statement about maybe some of the, not about what this council was asking, but about what some of the citizens about, what you were asking about your background and possible conflicts there. And I hope you understand that maybe some even the initial responses that you gave, maybe fostered some doubt, you know, about whether that is truly the case or not. So I hope that's the case. You said that that's the case and that there, and again, I really didn't think at the beginning there was a conflict of interest. Definitely a perceived conflict of interest, which is exactly what we're dealing with, which is the perceived, really, can we really trust the city? Can we trust this council? Can we trust the people who are making these decisions? So it's not really a question. I guess I wanted to share with you, you know, some of my thoughts on that, and hopefully I think you agree with that and that we could, and certainly you have a background. This is not the time to defend your background or to say, "Hey, look at what I've done." And this is the time to say, "I am going to be humble here, and I'm going to come and serve the city of Albuquerque if they ask me to do this, and we're going to help them regain the trust that the city should have."
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, that is an excellent point. One of the reasons that our process, the reason our process was so successful in my case in Cincinnati, and it has become a successful model in other cities when they have interventions by the federal government, part of that was this broad collaborative process that your council leaders and the mayor's office have now jointly embraced. That is a genuinely broad, inclusive process that is designed to lead not just to an agreement that you live with for a few years, but to sustainable reform at both the macro and the micro levels. It is about rebuilding exactly that trust that is so critical in police-community relations. One of the things that we found when we did the collaborative in Cincinnati is that the overlap in our stakeholder groups, the interests that were shared the most, the two groups that shared the most commonality and their interests, what they wanted, were the members of the minority community and members, the line officers, who would have to implement the agreement. And the number-one goal that they identified, and the number-one goal that was really shared with the stakeholder groups, was mutual respect. People wanted to have respect and trust in the interactions between police officers and the peoples, the people that they interacted with. Rebuilding that in Albuquerque is a critical first step, and it's why council, it's why this council, part of this client, the city of Albuquerque, that's why you play an absolutely critical role in the process. And that's why I insist that you be involved in.
Counselor Gargano?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, thank you for your humility. Your expertise is, you know, something that I think you should be proud of, but I still contend that no one holds complete and total ownership of expertise. There have been many jurisdictions that have gone through this. I don't know that any one person has gone from beginning to end or what the, you know, cumulative areas of interest were for any one person. But I can assure you, over the 14 jurisdictions that I've read about, researched, there were different people that supplied information, defended, negotiated for those jurisdictions. So they must have acquired some level of expertise. What I'm trying to get at is that we've talked to enough folks so that we know we have the right person to represent. For instance, when you're asked, you know, what other clients you have, and you insist on saying that it's sort of nobody's business, that's not helpful. So I'll ask you again, what other clients do you have that we would be able to then assess on some level, at your ability to do the work that's been asked of you?
Mr. President, Counselor Gargano, that's an excellent question. I will tell you the clients that I can disclose, both in my legal capacity and in doing other work with Chief Stryker. I've done work for the city of Miami Beach, I've worked with the city of Spokane, I've worked for Charlotte Mecklenburg, I've worked with, I've worked on some implementation with Seattle and New Orleans. A number of jurisdictions have consulted with me on their implementation in this process.
So when you're saying you didn't want to divulge what clients you have, was because, why? I mean, if you just did it now?
No, Mr. President, Counselor Gargano, I can tell you the ones, clients have a right to insist that even the fact of the representation be private and privileged. And unless a client, a legal client, tells me I can disclose that, in other words, they waive that privilege, I can't even tell you that. So if you ask me for a client list, I would be absolutely prohibited ethically from simply divulging that. But I can give you those cities as examples, and City Attorney Turk, I think, has a pretty comprehensive set of references of people that you can follow up with as well.
And Mr. President, just a question about the timing and also the amounts. At the time that you were asked if you could represent the city, and 70,000 was a number that was obviously presented, was that a number that you were comfortable with, that you thought, "Well, you know, that's something I can work under and do the work that is needed," without having to necessarily think about what more supplemental money I'll have to ask for?
Mr. President, Counselor Gargano, that number is not a realistic number for the lifespan of the negotiation or the crafting of an agreement, and certainly not for implementation, because this process usually takes about a year. It is our goal, I think it's our eternal goal, to have negotiations and the creation of an agreement significantly under that period of time. But Albuquerque was in a somewhat unique place in that nobody started negotiations until there was a findings letter. And you had a critical incident, the tragic officer-involved shooting of James Boyd that caused the urgency of the situation to become refocused. So the findings letter came early, and it was before there was any negotiation. Now it's time to start negotiation in earnest. Now is the time to address the serious issues that are laid out in the findings letter. I'm a civil rights lawyer. I take, I take those findings at their word. I've worked with people in that department. In fact, some of them and I are on a panel together in a couple of months, talking about patterned practice litigation. So the issues that are identified in this findings letter, that's why I use the phrase, "We have a fierce urgency in this city to do this soon, but to do it right."
Well, I heard two things. One was that you hoped that it would be done in a year. So this supplemental would be sufficient to take care of that? But then I heard a conflicting number, because it'll be more than 220,000, it'll be maybe half a million.
Mr. President, Counselor Gargano, litigation, and that's what this is, it's pre-litigation, goes in waves. There are quiet periods, and then there are intense periods. If we have time set aside to spend a week in Albuquerque in face-to-face negotiations with the Department of Justice, that is something that is just expensive. If it's in-between site, what we call site visits, and it's exchanges of emails and voicemails, those things are much less expensive. But a great deal of what goes into crafting an agreement like this does have to happen face-to-face. And that's really important. We have to hear from our stakeholders, not just top-level people at the DOJ and top-level people for the city, but we need to genuinely hear from our stakeholders in this community about what the solutions are and what the issues are, so that when we put them into an agreement, that that agreement sticks and is achievable and has measurable goals. I don't want to see Albuquerque stuck in a DOJ agreement for 10 years, or 12 years, or 23 years. I just don't want to see that. I want us to have an agreement that the city, that the council, that the administration, and that the population can embrace, in one in which you could not just succeed, but become, I like what I've heard from somebody in the city, that we want to take the crown, we want to take the title away from Cincinnati as best reform process. And you can do it. You could do it in Albuquerque. And the first step to doing that is what you enact tonight, I hope, with all of your votes. And the second step is crafting an appropriate resolution agreement in Albuquerque that works for the population and works for the police department, that has those measurable goals and holds us to them. And I ask that you empower me to lead your team to represent you so that I can give you a product that you can be proud of, a signature achievement from your tenure.
Mr. President, one very short question. In order to arrive at some of these numbers, there must be some level of fee. What is your hourly fee?
My hourly rate here is less than half what it would be for a private client. It's $350 an hour. That is half, less than half what I am routinely awarded by judges and fee petitions in civil rights cases. I've been doing this a very long time. I'm sorry, I ignored the formality. Excuse me, Mr. President, Counselor Gargano, but that's the rate.
Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, I have three questions I'd like to ask. First one, what kind of relationship do you have with the DOJ as far as being able to negotiate and work with them?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, historically, I had a great relationship with the DOJ. Last year, I taught, I was one of their signature faculty members. I taught with then-retired, now commissioner again, Bill Bratton in New York, and Superintendent Chuck Ramsey, the chief in Philadelphia. We were the three headliners for the DOJ's BJA Division. They call it Excellence in Policing. It is a program that the DOJ combines that is designed to identify cities who are really low on the radar screen before they require a higher level of intervention. And I'm one of their key people. I'm one of the key people who has worked with the DOJ. Again, I, Sam Walker, who is the esteemed academic on police accountability, David Harris, who coined the term racial profiling, and is the, has done the seminal work on that, Kristy Lopez, who is the Assistant Section Chief for the Civil Rights Special Litigation Division, and a few others. We crafted the blueprint that this administration is using in patterned practice cases. So I've had an excellent reputation with them. I have found the Civil Rights Division and the Special Litigation Section in particular to be among the most honorable professionals that I've ever had to work with.
Okay, second question. Did you used to work with the ACLU?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, let me clarify that. I've never been an employee of the ACLU. I have always been. For 22 years, I have been a lay leader of the ACLU. I've been a member of my affiliates board for that length of time. I've served on the National ACLU Board for 10 years, and I've served as one of its national general counsel for 10 years. In fact, 10 years, eight years. I am not here in any capacity as an ACLU lawyer, but it's hard to erase something that's been on your resume for 22 years. It's just, it's part of who I am, it's part of my values, it's part of what I bring to my emphasis on police accountability and rebuilding trust.
Okay, Mr. Greenwood, last question. What do you bring to this process? And let me clarify, because we are going to vote on R-67 to the steps in the community outreach process, but I think that's something the city could do without you. So what do you bring to the process on all this deliberation with the DOJ?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, what I bring is the experience of having done it right, but the knowledge and the humility of knowing the missteps that we took along the way, the mistakes that we made early in the process that led to some de-policing. I know how to avoid that. I know that it is imperative, if we are to fix police-community relations in this city, that you need to have the trust and ownership of all stakeholders in your community. And that includes, that includes the dissidents, protesters, aggrieved families, police officers, people in the neighborhood associations, people in racial and ethnic minorities, and people of faith. I know that we need that. I put the process together, and nobody else has done that. Frankly, there are not a lot of good success stories out there in police reform litigation. There aren't very many. The former Attorney General called our process "the best" and called us by name. I was the plaintiff's lawyer that made that happen. The person who was my adversary, the one that I filed all the lawsuits against, became a convert because he understood that constitutional policing is better, more effective policing, that if you fix the relationship between the police and the community, policing works better. Police don't become just enforcement model, police become community service, problem-solving model, and that really addresses things. And I don't think anybody else has done that.
Are there any other questions from this council? Counselor Bennett?
So, Mr. Greenwood, I've only been in one meeting with you. That had to do with the collaborative process that you mentioned, which I do support and which seems like a good way to, to get the community buy-in, I think, that we need to this process. which seems like a good way to get the community buy-in, I think, that we need to this process. I think part of the difficulty for me is, we know, and we've been told repeatedly, that the DOJ doesn't deal with city councils, they deal with the executive. That's just the way they operate, regardless of how cities are structured. They have that as their modus operandi. But that does put us in an odd position as councillors, as Counselor Pena said, you know, in the initial selection of you guys. You know, we weren't really part of that. You were chosen by the administration. You were put under contract, in the type of contract that didn't require our approval. Now's the time for us to approve, in addition to your contract, for you to be able to go forward. Could you clarify on the, would this bring the total to two-twenty, or is the seventy that was already part of your previous agreement part of this two-twenty?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I believe it's included in that amount. If I'm wrong, like, with the city attorney.
Mr. Attorney, yeah. Is this a request for an additional one-fifty?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes. The stuff that you have in front of you is in addition to the seven-seven.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Greenwood, what will the role of Mr. Stryker be in going forward and as part of these services?
Tom Stryker is the only police chief who starred -- I'm sorry, disregarding the protocol again. Mr. President, Counselor Benton, let me address a couple of your questions. Chief Stryker's role will be multifaceted. He will be involved in negotiation, because he knows what works and what doesn't work in these agreements, and from his own mistakes, and candidly, from his own early failures in our process. He will also be a chief person during implementation. Because he was the only chief who started and ended one of the processes very successfully, he is extremely well-regarded by his peers with major city law enforcement. In his final year of service, he was awarded what is regarded as the Triple Crown as a police chief, the key awards from IACP, the Police Executive Research Forum, and Major City Chiefs Association for his performance. So he is, he is an executive who is very much praised for managing and implementing that process the most successfully. But more importantly, I think, he is a cop's cop. He's a true cop's cop, and he knows, he knows how it works at every level inside a law enforcement agency. He can tell you the processes that work right and the ones that work not so well. He knows how systems and processes ought to be designed inside a police agency. He's the best expert on being a police chief that you could possibly have at this moment.
So, Mr. President, so his role is as a resource to you, or is he sitting with you at the table with DOJ once we get down to cracking this?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, his role will be in both capacities. But I want the council to understand clearly, I am the city's special counsel. If you approve the supplemental, I'm your lawyer. I'm the city's lawyer. I'm the chief of the delegation that will negotiate with the Department of Justice. Mr. Stryker will be there. Chief Eaton and Assistant Chief Huntsman will be there. The CAO will be there. The city attorney's office will also be there as well. And we'll have people as necessary, as resources, on the different subject matters as we go through them.
Okay, we're actually expecting this, something from the DOJ any day now, am I correct?
We'll know, again, Mr. President, Counselor Benton, we will receive it as soon as they have a product that they care to send to us. That's true.
Okay. And not to eat up too much of your valuable time, but how do you foresee keeping the council abreast of these issues? I mean, if every single one of us has the private meetings with you, we'd already be eating up the entire two-twenty?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that's an excellent point. And I think the protocol that we've developed is that your director and your president would be my principal liaison, and as needed, I would brief counsel on progress or on issues that are coming up, either in executive session or individually as necessary. But those two people, both your staff director, your director, and your president would be the principal liaisons today.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, I have a question about the mediator and the role of the mediator. Is there a role for the mediator during these negotiations?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, when you're referring to the mediator, you're talking about the mediator in the collaborative process in the legislation, correct?
I believe so.
That mediator is designed, that's the beauty of this process, because the city ignites it. You're the catalyst for this entire collaborative. But we have the large meetings, and it's mediated and facilitated, and then you step back from it, and the people of Albuquerque take ownership of the collaborative process. So the mediator is there in this process to make certain that the meetings are run, they're run well, they're run according to the outlines of what we're looking to do here, that every stakeholder group is asked the same questions, that we allow people to share their responses as in detail and in depth as they want to. That's really what the mediator is there to do. And at the tail end, the mediator is not the person who writes an agreement, the mediator is really the person who helps bring all the stakeholder groups back together, so that the people of Albuquerque design an action plan or your own collaborative agreement that works for the people of this community.
Counselor Benton. Explain what this does. I don't know how to clarify.
And we also have one individual side of the street. So do you want to hear from the public first, or do you want to go to staff?
I should probably hear from the public first.
Okay. Sue Flut, you're up.
I'm going to have to step in a little bit, sorry.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I know quite a few lawyers myself that don't charge as much as he does, and does civil rights. On the R-1461, I oppose this in two parts. I don't believe in the first place, as the city of Albuquerque, that we should have non-resident municipal electors in our special election, when we are talking about our general obligation funds that have already been appropriated. When I think about, when I first read it, Councilwoman Harris had said something about the unspent proceeds. I can't see where we would have any unspent proceeds in the city that we would reappropriate to go into the metropolitan redevelopment. And in the metropolitan redevelopment, this right here on the OC-1132 is actually what I did confront you for in the past two and a half years. With my allegations on this, and the redevelopment that's being asked for in response to be appropriated or put aside for, I feel that these are going to go to developers, that this is going to go for the heights, that this is going to be maybe for more money for Mesa del Sol, that we've already given, what, promise six-hundred-and-twenty-five million over twenty-five years. I don't see why we would need to reappropriate our funds that are already for the city, for the streets, the landscape, and everything else. And I do a lot of reading, and I actually created a committee. It's called the Citizens Watch, the city council. And I watch all of your developments as much as I can. To me, allowing somebody to come in that's a non-resident stabs the votes. And if it's from the county, then it stabs the votes from the people in the county coming in and telling us how to reappropriate funds to fund people like Mr. Volpanen, who wants to do volcano heights. I totally think this is wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
Counsel Harris?
I'm going to have staff that can explain the bill in general, but she did bring up a good point, because this is going to be on the county-wide election. Are county voters, if you got a little bit of a city, that's allowed to vote on this question?
Mr. President, no.
Okay. Go ahead and talk about the development.
Mr. President, councilors, this bill is a response to a problem that staff ran into earlier this year when we were trying to use two-point-eight million dollars of East Gateway MR funding to purchase some land to redevelop a parcel at the corner of Central Tramway. I think the councilors, and specifically Counselor Harris, was under the impression that MR funding could be used flexibly, quote, "any project in an MR area that is included in an MR plan." What we found out is that by the way that the city's geo-program works, MR projects don't have their own question. They have to be included in one of the other ten questions that the city puts on the ballot every other year. And in this particular case, the East Gateway funding was put under the streets question, and so it could not be used flexibly to purchase the land that was recommended to us. And so we began to search for a way to repurpose those MR funds so that they could be used more flexibly. We've had bond counsel, we've had disclosure counsel, we've had the city's finance team and council staff working on this for a number of weeks. And this is the solution that they have come up with, which is essentially a bond question, which asks voters to approve six-point-five, up to six-point-five million dollars in MR bonds for the more flexible MR purpose. So generally speaking, that's what this does. Dwayne Brown, Bond Counsel from Modus Burling, is here to answer any technical questions if you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Simone, Mr. President. Though six-point-five million is more than East Gateway, so are there other districts that could benefit from this?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, there are. MR funds are spread out over a number of districts in the city. We anticipate that we'll begin issuing, if the voters approve this, it'll begin issuing with the East Gateway series or approximately two-point-eight million. But we want it to be flexible enough so that if other councilors or if there are other funds needed, it'd be made more flexible than we could.
Okay, and Counsel, just so you know, and actually, that parcel structure might not be something I actually want to go forward with, but if you're starting as a council to get some MR money, and then you want to do a project, let's say, to tell a market, and then you find out that all the money's in the streets, or the ultimate high or something like that, whatever, these MR projects, and you find out that even though we passed the legislation, and legislation was very broad, but then when we had to stick it in question, we stepped in and answered our question. So whatever we do, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Simone, that if we do repurpose this money, it'll come back to the council, and the councilors will have to vote on another project?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, in order to issue funds that would repurpose this, yes, it has to come back to council.
Okay, so this just goes to the public, so they can approve repurposing the money? And then if we do that, and we still have to come back to the council to actually vote on it, they would repurpose and end that one?
That's correct. Counsel Vice President Jones, and then Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Simone, I assume you're the person to ask this question. Explain to me if someone waiting outside of the city limits cannot vote on this, what does non-resident voting division, what does qualified non-resident electors need? Who can vote on this issue?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, and Vice President, that's a great question. I'm going to defer to Dwayne Brown, Bond Counsel of Modus. Mr. Brown, go proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Dwayne Brown from Modus Burling, Law Firm. Counselor Jones, the non-resident municipal elector provisions are included in the general obligation bond statutes, and they're applicable. It's like all the things we're trying to do now, when we're trying to create a task force on mental health, or we're trying to figure out how we're going to choose our police oversight system, you know, all of that is pretty dicey when you get down to, okay, how are we actually going to name these people? You know, and I often just come back to, well, we're the council, we're the ones that were elected to make the tough decisions, let's just make them ourselves. But on a situation like this, where certainly we want to be reaching out, we failed to reach out, now we're in a situation where we must reach out in order to implement what we're expecting to be coming from the DOJ, it makes it tough. It's hard for me to vote for this, but it's hard for me to be jumping up and down, or it's hard for me to vote against it, excuse me, but it's hard for me to be jumping up and down with joy. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx it by speaking badly, but I think it's very, very, very important how these people are chosen. And hopefully, if this passes, we can have a real dialogue with the administration about that specifically, to make sure that this really is represented. It's a tough call, Counselor Gregunio. Yeah, who's the community? I mean, we're the community, but yeah, there's a huge community out there, many of whom come and have spoken to us about these issues on a regular basis. So it makes it a tough decision for me, but thank you for raising the question about it, Counselor Green.
Counselor Benton?
Well, I'd have to agree with Counselor Benton. You know, when I read this, I think it's a real tough one for me, because I think it's something that, obviously, we need to do, we need to be in contact with the community. But when we outline who the community is, and it really kind of feels a little bit like a top-down approach, you know, it's these entities that are going to be making the decisions for the community, and I would prefer that we didn't list all these folks and just put in them as citizens of Albuquerque, rather than, and it gives people the opportunity to sign up, whether you belong from our organization or you're just off the street and you want to be part of the dialogue.
Counselor Penney, anybody can sign up. They can go online on the ABQ website and sign up. They don't have to attend these meetings. They can provide their input. We will have facilitators working with us. And as far as integrating the people that have been here, I think this council, Counselor Gregunio, has been very attentive in working with members of this community that have come down to voice their concerns and these opinions. I think that's the reason that the Department of Justice came down. We passed the resolution, it was supported by this council. And I think it's critical that we involve the community and citizens, because the citizens will be involved. We are identifying stakeholders here, but it will be the citizens of Albuquerque that will formulate these changes. And that's what we need more now than ever before, is a community involvement. And, you know, I support the people that have come down, and I would hope that these people that have come down to these meetings will also be engaged and involved, because they've had a lot of great input, and they've given us some really sound advice over the last four and a half years. And I would hope that they will continue to provide information to the council and to the community. But again, we will have facilitators working on this. And I just feel that we're at a point in our history in this city that we have to make some major changes and major reforms. I think if the community can buy into it, the Albuquerque Police Department, their spouses and their families can buy into it, then it will be a success. Counselor Gregunio?
Well, I don't disagree with the fact that we need connection, and we need to reach out, but I agree with Counselor Benton, Counselor Pena, that we have to be careful that we don't come off as thinking that we know who it is that we should identify. And that's what this does. I know that it says at the end, you know, after a long lit, you know, folks that are supposed to stakeholders, and I don't know who decided these were stakeholders, but whoever did, so be it. But at the end, it talks about how anybody that wants to, well, you know, that in itself is a little dismissive, to say at the very end, you know, you have the opportunity to be an upright citizen and do the work that we want you to do. And again, as Counselor Pena said, it feels very top-down. It feels like we're telling the community how we want them to act, when we want them to act, what kinds of meetings we want them to have, where the meetings are going to be. I mean, this is the kind of stuff that they've been telling us they don't want. And we've not been disrespectful. I agree with you, Counselor President. But we haven't been attentive in the sense that people feel like when they come here, their views are heard. And that's what I get. When I go out into the community I represent, that's the sense I get. And that's what I'm talking about. I don't know if anybody else gets that kind of feedback, but I sure do. And maybe I hang out with the wrong folks, I don't know, but they sure tell me that. When they come here, it is, you know... When they come here, it is, you know, something seemingly as petty as people looking at their iPads, people, you know, giggling and smiling and getting on the phone and givin' way each other. That's disrespectful. I don't care who you are. So now to expect those folks to say, oh, well, all we needed was a list and to tell us who you want us to identify with and we'll be ready to do this. And I am conflicted just like Counsel Benton and Counsel Penney. I probably will vote against it because I just don't think this is the way to do it. And if in the future we come up with another way of making sure that the community comes to us and says, here's what I think we can do generally together, then I'll vote for that. Thank you.
And one of your comments, I would hope that the public could understand that our agenda items are on our iPads. That's why we do look at our iPads. That's part of our agenda factor.
What have I read? Counselor Penney?
And, you know, I would just say that, again, that if this does pass and the way this is worded is, it says it's the council and administration working together to create this. So I think that's, that's important. And also it does say shall include but not be limited to. So I think, you know, if we're going to give this, this entity that we're creating, the collaborative, real credence that we need to pay as councilors and working with the administration a special attention to maybe a category in here that we haven't thought of yet.
Are there any questions? To speak, Sue Flint, Ted Minsky and Larry Komen. Minsky, go on, proceeds. For Sue Flint? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, let me start from right here.
Nice to see you again. On the R-1473, I'm very conflicted in this because I am very involved in mental illness. It happens since I was four years old. And I would sign up to the committee myself and the community if we were to do anything with mental illness and you need someone. But I don't know about this because my brother was incarcerated and he was schizophrenic. When he would come out, that was our problem. And we were his family. We knew how to handle him, we knew how to talk to him, we knew everything about him. We knew his mental conditions, his physical conditions, everything. And I don't think this is a step that you should have first because you need to address what their problem is before they come out and then you decide that you're going to maybe help them with some type of housing. My brother burnt down two apartment that he was placed in by the state because he wasn't able to go into a facility. And if you've ever been to any facilities in this town or in the state, it's really a shame. It's really a shame the way people are treated and when they come out. Mental illness is something that people don't talk about, you know? It's kind of like they're with cancer. You don't want to admit that your family has and you don't want to admit that there's problems. I don't think that $200,000 for a pilot program, and I believe in the program, is enough. I think that it'll barely touch it. I think that you've got to assess them. I know what you're dealing with before you can actually place or implement something like this. It's way beyond what you think it is. That's why the state of Mexico has always failed in mental health. You deal with mental health, you go to the state hospital. You have somebody like me that falls apart, you know, one day and there's no place to put me in the city. Where are they going to send me? They're going to send me to the state hospital because I don't have money. And they're going to put me with criminals. You have to assess people before you make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to this counsel?
Thank you. I'm here to speak in support of this bill. I agree with the speaker before me, $200,000 is not nearly enough to start addressing from the city's portion of it. I started working on the McLendon lawsuit representing the subclass of inmates at MDC in 1997. The subclass of inmates that have mental health or developmental disability. This aspect has always been part of what we were advocating for. And at that time, of course, McLendon was the stepchild of this council and the city. For years, we'd been advocating and the attorneys still on that case are still advocating for, it's not just conditions in the jail for the subclass of people, but it's what the city and the county can do for them outside of the jail and the conditions and the services that they need. Housing is one of them. Discharge planning at the jail is one of them. But they can't plan for discharge if there's no services outside of the jail. And that's part of, not only the county's responsibility, but the city's responsibility even though the jail is no longer under the auspices of the city. So I urge you to keep pursuing this. Realize that $200,000 is a drop in the bucket of what's needed out there. And I thank you for putting this on your agenda.
Counselor Benton?
And just to clarify, the $200,000 was a placeholder and it's probably, probably was unfortunate to include that in there. We know that the city's commitment is going to have to be a whole lot more than $200,000. But that was the intent at the time and I think it probably just sent a confusing message. So my apologies for that. But the bill, as it's been substituted, I think expresses a very strong support. And again, my expectation would be we should be discussing an actual figure and a serious commitment to the program in early August.
And let me just say, I want to thank Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Maggie Hart-Studman for their work. They've appropriated about $1.2 billion with the expectations of the city trying to match them because they know how important this is and we at the same time know the importance of this issue. And I want to thank both sponsors for your work on this and the council for appropriating the budget, $1.5 billion. I mean, how critical these issues are and I just, again, don't think that's going to be enough money. But with the limited resources that we have available, I think it's critical that we leverage our resources with the county in trying to leverage those dollars as much as we possibly can.
Counsel Winter to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, this is an exciting bill, but the fact that the task force is starting to get up and running. And let me reiterate, this is that the state is working, the county and the city are all working together to look at the recommendations. And I think the intent is for them to take this field and look at this. And this is going to be part of the pieces or the puzzle to really make a dent in mental health issues. And it's very exciting.
We have a motion that needs to be seconded for floor substitute R-73. Almost a favor. Signified by saying yes. Yes, opposed, I encourage unanimously. We are now under IM-15 and that is EC-14-104. That is the mayor's veto of four substitute R-13-2. And we have one individual that has signed up to speak. Ted Minsky?
Mr. President, Counselor Gordon. There's the title to the legislation. At least there would be an argument that doesn't reflect the substance of what is in the bill. And therefore there's a notice issued. I think this is one of those situations where perhaps an amendment was made towards the end of the process and we didn't realize that it was not contained within the title. And that is something that is required under law.
Mr. President, is that the understanding of the councilors and staff of the city council?
Louis Flunders and Mr. Harris, we'll go to you next.
Do you go or?
Go on, proceed, Counsel Harris.
So what happened is that there was initially a bill that was going to deal with issues about the referendums. And then I thought it would be a good idea just to deal with all charter issues. And then after we did that, then we separated the bills. So then we amended them, we included every.